In the mighty name of Jesus, amen.
Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance followed by the stability pledge if you would like to join us. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Civility pledge, I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my city. Thank you all. As for approving of the minutes of the last meeting, I would obtain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minute of the November four regular city council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing the favor of approving the motion or the minute of the November meeting, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes. The minutes are approved. And Madam Clerk, if you would please present to us the certified twenty twenty-three general election results.
We have reported about the different policies of our elections and registration. The November seventh, twenty twenty-three general election results are as follows. Council District Two, Councilmember Bryson Caldwell, vote cast thirty-six. District number four, Bryan Meadows, hundred ninety-eight point vote cast, Council District number six. Vote cast, Colan Hungbilly, two hundred and thirteen, Sean Morrison, fifteen, Craig Weber, fifty-six. Now that the legal timeline has expired, any purchase has been heard inside of following candidates are submitted to the council being elected before your turn. And is recommended to be successful candidates, people run by the head. For Council District number two, Bryson Caldwell. Council District number four, Bryan Meadows. Council District number six, all of them.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, any questions from the council? Hearing no objection, the I am pleased to say that the city council approves certification of the twenty twenty-three general election results. Thank you very much. Now, for the good part, a recognition of our Mayor Pro Tem Andrews and Councilmember McGee. Councilman McGee, if you would join me up front, I have a little something for you here.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully it's the award for best dressed councilman.
Well, we have for you today a proclamation, and I don't usually read the whole thing, but I think this is pretty important. So if you will bear with me, I'm going to read the whole proclamation for y'all this evening. Whereas Bobby McGee faithfully served the citizens of the city of Hartsville as councilmember for District Six from March, March twenty nineteen to December of twenty-three. And whereas since making Hartsville his home, he has launched his own business to help those in the community prepare for their financial future, while planning for and protecting themselves from the unexpected. And whereas Bobby's dedication to and love for Hartsville is evident in his many years of community service volunteering, and here goes the list. As a guardian at Lightem, to serve service on the boards, Calviator Gardens, Greater Hartsville Chamber of Commerce, Hartsville Downtown Development Association, Christmas in April, Hartsville Rotary Club, and Darlington Community Action Agency, and work on the City Tenure Park Development Committee, Law and Park Committee, Darlington County Capital Project Sales Tax Commission, and the Hartsville Planning Commission. And whereas, while serving on council, he continued his long career of community service by dedicating time to student interest investment and the education of our youth. St. Bartholomew's Church and Parish, Lions Club, where I'm a fellow Lion, within. And the Hartsville Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, among other worthwhile efforts. And whereas during his years of service on council, he made great contributions to the growth and development of Hartsville as he sought to keep the good things going and keep attracting people to Hartsville. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Hartsville, South Carolina desire to recognize its dedication, leadership, and contributions to the people of Hartsville, express their gratitude, our gratitude, for his exemplary service. Now therefore I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the city of Hartsville and the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, this week, as Bobby McGee Week. And today, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, is the Honorable Councilmember Bobby McGee Day. And urge the citizens of Hartsville, as all of you, to honor him for his many years of service and dedication to Hartsville. Councilman McGee, it's my pleasure. Thank you enough for your service to Hartsville and now no good will be done. What's that?
They gave red phones.
Yeah, exactly. Pro Tem Andrews, if you would. I'm surprised you all put everything on one page, to be honest with you. All right. Johnny L. Andrews, Jr. has a long history of community involvement and influence in Hartsville, South Carolina, serving the citizens as an educator for over four decades. Member of city council for twenty-four years, and is mayor pro tem for fourteen years, only two of them with me. As well as service on Hartsville Planning Commission before being elected. And whereas a Hartsville resident since childhood and copper college graduate pursuant pursuit of a master's degree in education took him away from this beloved hometown for only a short time before he returned to educate the youth of Hartsville. And whereas Johnny's stellar four decades of services as an educator at Butler High School and Hartsville High School, and through the International Baccalaureate Program positively influenced the lives of young men and women, specifically our future leaders, literally, during the meeting in the room tonight. And whereas his years on council demonstrated a mission to preserve, restore, and ensure Hartsville has a sense of place from downtown throughout all of Hartsville. Exhibited most notably through his work with historical places such as Pride Park, the historic Butler did high school, and the Amerian, and the Marion Avenue Cemetery, to name just a few. And whereas he has been a strong leader and stabilizing force in local government for over twenty-four years, through an era of remarkable growth and success through, during which he served as historian and parliamentarian for council. And whereas the community's trust and support in him is evidence, as he has run unopposed in five subsequent elections since nineteen ninety-nine. Paul's remitted when I, when I asked Johnny for advice about how to, how to run a campaign, he said, well, I just buy books, stamps, and send out letters. I wish it could've been that easy. Whereas Johnny Andrews, Jr. leaves a lasting legacy demonstrating how love for your hometown can make a profound and lasting impact on the community, which will last for generations. Now therefore I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the city of Hartsville, South Carolina, hereby name the week of December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, as Johnny L. Andrews, Jr. Week. And today, Tuesday, December twelfth, as the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Johnny L. Andrews, Jr. Day. And urge the citizens of Hartsville to honor him for his many years of exemplary service and tireless dedication to our beloved hometown of Hartsville. Don't change your button. He's taking my second order. That brings us to the swearing in of our newly elected officials. If y'all, two of you wouldn't mind coming to the front to join us.
Kind of all three.
Well, and the three of you. Councilmember Colwell, we're just going after that. You would repeat after me, I'll read your office, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected. And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of this state and the United States. As councilmember of the municipality of Hartsville, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust proposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law, the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God. Thank you, sir. Do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of this state
that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of this state
to exercise the duty of the offices to which I have been elected
to exercise the duties of all
and that I will, to the best of my ability
and that I will, to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of this state
and preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of this state
and of the United States, so help me God
and of the United States, so help me God.
As councilmember of the municipality of Hartsville
as councilmember for the municipality of Hartsville
I will equally, fairly, and impartially
I will equally, fairly, and impartially
to the best of my ability and skill
to the best of my ability and skill
exercise the trust proposed in me
exercise the trust proposed in me
and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace
and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace
and carry into effect according to the law
and carry into effect according to the law
the purposes for which I have been elected, so help me God
the purposes for which I have been elected, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God. As councilmember of the municipality of Hartsville I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust proposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected to help me God. Congratulations, sir. Now, before you take your seats, gentlemen, I'd like to give our, our councilmen a say a few words, if you'd like. McGee?
Sure. Tell the council members, I would say it's been a pleasure to serve with y'all. I appreciate the passion that each one of you brings to the podium, to the staff that we meet, and that you deeply care about Hartsville, that you have care and will continue to do that. Enjoy most of you there. To the constituents out there, that's the best part of this job, is, is working with the citizens and listening to them and helping and doing what you can. You can't always solve every problem, but just the ability to interact with them. I've met so many different people that, and to you, I say, thank you very much. It has been a good experience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, if you're at reception, you've probably heard this before, but I think I need to say it to everyone. First of all, I want to thank my family. They're very supportive. And anybody that's ever been on council knows how important and important support of the family is. Maybe reminded me Sunday that I've been on council for approximately half of our married life. We'll be married fifty years next summer. So that's pretty significant sacrifice for her. When I was elected, my son, Thomas, was maybe a sophomore. And Sarah, I think, was at Hartsville High School, maybe a sophomore. So it's been a big part of their lives as well. And all these grandchildren did not exist, which, which I'm glad they're here now. And, and support is really great. Secondly, the citizens of Hartsville, constituents, that's why we do this, you know. I'm maybe an anomaly, I'm not on social media, but you can call me, and you can catch me at the grocery store or whatever, and hopefully I will respond. And, you know, citizens of Hartsville, it's about quality of life, it's about equity. And hopefully we've done some of that during my tenure. Thirdly, the staff of the city of Hartsville. They're the ones that get things done. They're the ones that make us on council look good when things go right. And always try to be supportive with staff. You know, I walk very early in the morning, and I'll see people blowing the streets, five o'clock in the morning, downtown, making the town look better. I'll see them sweeping the streets. You know, you just don't know. You know, things have to be that way to have that quality of life that we've got there. To my fellow council members, as I said at reception, I was fortunate enough to serve with six mayors, two of whom are here. Past mayors are here, as well as Mayor Hancock. And I've had the privilege of having twelve iterations of city council. And six city managers are acting city managers. So that's a long tenure, but I think each one of these people have the best interests of the city at heart. And finally, to the two newly elected council members, Bryan and Colan. I'm fortunate enough to have known you in a different life, and I wish you the very best. And I am glad, at least in Hartsville, I, when I've talked to them before and after the election, I said, I, I wish for you a whole four years of boring council meetings. You don't want to make headlines. You know, and Hartsville's been really fortunate at that. And I think part of that is, is we don't have the partisanship, a lot of places do. And so we, we're a nonpartisan board, and I think that works wonders. Everybody has the interest of the city and the citizens. As long as we do that, I think Hartsville will be successful. And I, and sincere in my belief that I think our best days are still ahead of us. So with this council going forward and future councils, you know, my family lives here, and your families live here, and that's one of the reasons we do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
He's trying to leave you, won't let.
Counselors, welcome. Congratulations. We have one more proclamation.
Keeping a seat, though. I'm still the only freshman that's never gotten to sit next to the mayor. Is that right? We're giving us the bag.
We have a proclamation for Dylan Adams Day. Is anyone here to, I imagine someone's prepared to accept this. Please go forward. Whereas Dylan Morris Adams, through his athletic excellence, helped earn our city two Dixie Youth World Series titles at Parks North, while claiming the batting title in the twenty seventeen World Series and setting the South Carolina state record for home runs in a game. And whereas above his athletic feats, Dylan was always smiling, never met a stranger. His affable presence had a positive impact on everyone who came in contact with him. And whereas Dylan was brave, courageous, and strong, while never faltering in his fight with cancer and continued to brighten any room he entered with his warm and loving smile. And whereas Dylan left a legacy and a baseball diamond that includes induction to the South Carolina Dixie Youth Hall of Fame, and having the fields he shined on growing up in North Hartsville named in his honor. And whereas Dylan's impact can be continuously felt through the elements and area works of the Dylan Adams Endowment, which is highlighted by the Dylan Adams Memorial Battle that brings baseball players from all over the Carolinas to play in Hartsville, to play in his honor and benefit in that one. Now therefore I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the city of Hartsville, and the city of, in the city of Hartsville and the state of South Carolina, honored to proclaim December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Dylan Adams Day. And the city of Hartsville, and ask all citizens of this great city to remember the great person Dylan was, the accomplishments he achieved, while also recognizing the impact his legacy did the graciousness of his parents, Mike and Jennifer, as having their families faced with caring for loved ones with pediatric cancer. It's my great honor and pleasure to present this to you tonight. You, unfortunately, have the opportunity to make a few comments, if you'd like. If not, feel free. That brings us to our public comment period. We have one individual who was registered to speak. Mr. Dublin, would you please come forward for your comments? Yes, if you come up to this microphone here. When you get there, please state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to two minutes or less.
Hi, my name is Wayman Dublin. I am from fifteen sixteen Baywood Circle in Hartsville. I'm here today to represent a unfortunately very rapidly growing group in our community, which is the elderly and the disabled, unfortunately of which I am both elderly and disabled. First, I want to comment that we are very honored and privileged to, to live in a community who has a downtown area that is as well-kept and, and developed as ours. We have several very good businesses downtown that my wife and I love to shop in. She loves the clothes that she gets downtown. The restaurants downtown are great. Pers Mc Barkin, we are animal lovers and have more animals than any couple should have. And Pers Mc Barkin and Dave down there are, are great. And I love coming down here just to, to meet people and talk. But I have one huge challenge in that, you know, because of the arthritis in my knees and back and the general it's very, very difficult for me to walk more than a block. And the lack of handicap parking spaces downtown in front of the businesses makes it hard for me to shop. I mean, there are several times when I come downtown and want to go and get something, and if there's not a parking space on that block, I have to just go home and come back and wait till another time. So two suggestions would be one, more handicap available parking spaces downtown in front of the shops. Because, you know, the, the possibility of me parking in this big lot back here behind Vintage and then walking up to the shops, I'm already done by the time I make it up to the shops. So more available parking spaces. And then another idea that I would have, which could be a money-making thing for the, the community once the original cost is made, is get once the original cost is made, is get two or three of the electric carts that you have in like a Walmart or, or some of the other retail establishments that maybe you could rent out from City Hall. Uh, I know when I go to the zoo, they have them now in Columbia, a lot of places are getting them. Uh, and they usually charge twenty to thirty bucks every time you rent one of those out. So, and I was a Walmart manager before I went disabled, so I know how much they cost. And it doesn't take too many of those twenty or thirty dime, thirty dollar rental fees before the equipment's paid for, and then you're adding money to the pot. But it's also something that would, uh, very much improve shopping experience downtown, uh, for those of us who are elderly and handicapped.
Great. Well, uh, first, I would tend to agree with you. You're not the only person who has, has come to me asking for either more or better positioned handicap parking spaces. I wish it was more under our control. We have to work with the state on that, but that doesn't mean we can't approve it. Um, as far as the, the card.
Tell me which part of the state handles it, and I'll be glad to, to get on them. I'm, I'm not bashful at all.
Yeah, but, uh, it's your idea about the carts. That's a cool idea. Before, I'd ask, uh, Mr. Manager, if we could look into some of the preliminary details on that. And if you would, um, please follow up with me about this issue and about your ideas on homelessness. You can reach out to me directly or, or, uh, or contact the clerk. And I'm, I'm easy to get ahold of. Thank you for coming.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sequins are hot.
I couldn't tell if he was Santa Claus or the Grinch.
Christmas spirit. It's TBD. Let's see how long the rest of the meeting goes, right? Speaking of, uh, Mr. Manager, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have just three items for you tonight. Uh, one, I want to, um, say that coming up in January, we are looking at our next strategic planning session. Of course, we have two new council members, so we have to break them into, uh, strategic planning. But of course, it's a public meeting for everyone to come and see, uh, essentially what council wants to do in his next, upcoming, this next year. Part of the things that we're looking at doing is actually doing a series of them. And I sent that out to kind of really spread it, spread it out of next few days, of course, the days, so that we really can really dive into some more important issues. Uh, one of the things we are looking at doing is actually a driving tour with new members of council and our current members of council. And drive-throughs parts of the city you might not have seen, or we can see them through seven people's eyes. Uh, we want to see what the rest of the city and how the whole city needs to come together in some aspects. We also are going to be doing a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. This is a great opportunity for us to look at, um, kind of how the city looks, what we want to do from a thirty thousand foot view, how we want to shape the city, um, certainly look at our zoning code and seeing what we can do and changes. Get you guys all working to the same kind of beat. Um, you know, you said Johnny Andrews is on Plan Commission, Mayor, you're on Plan Commission. It's extremely important that the Plan Commission and the Council work lock and step together that we can make sure that we're moving towards the right goals. Second, I want to introduce Bethany. Are you over here somewhere? Hey, Bethany. This is our new, uh, Michelle, why don't you introduce her for it, if you don't mind? Yeah, put you on the spot.
Well, she might not be the newest addition, but she is our new special events coordinator. You guys will see her at all of our special events. Um, if you were in the parade this past weekend, you probably saw her on the parade. So you'd welcome her.
Welcome to the city.
We're so glad to have you. Bethany started just before the onslaught.
Um, she actually volunteered with the city through the part of the holidays festival and then still came to work on it.
And then did the parade and is still here.
Yes, she is.
So we really appreciate your dedication. We're so glad to have you.
Well, you saw them, I thought I was going to thank the staff for working so hard with the Harde the Hall.
You'll do it better.
Of course, council members are able to join us. This was our first ever Harde the Holidays. It was a three-day event. I think it was fantastic. I think it was the best one we've ever done with the open house, starting with that. We're the first ones to welcome Christmas to the PD, so we're very proud of that. And I think we, um, you know, really did a great job. And Bethany was there without getting paid. It's in the mail, don't worry.
With mine?
With, yeah, yours is, we're going to triple yours, it's fine. But, uh, we're very excited about this new holiday tradition. And of course, the parade, which I think was excellent. More the most participants we've had, Michelle, is that correct, Haley? The most participants in the parade, so with the most floats this year. It was outstanding. The crowd, it just kept going. I turned a corner and there was more. So it was very exciting. So, um, just wanted to say, uh, we have a great twenty twenty-four coming ahead of us, and we're happy to be here.
The, um, open house and the festival, um, I, I would say, I would say were fantastic. So thank you all. I know it's a lot of work.
The parade is always, always so much fun for me. And I was not able to make two of these, but I was able to make the, uh, the tree lighting and, uh, downtown festival that night. They were all great. So, um, you all did a really, really good job. Congratulations.
It was my team and a lot of people in other departments as well, so.
It was all hands.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It was all hands.
All hands.
Fantastic. That's all, Mr. Mayor. That's all, all right. We'll move right on the consent, consent agenda received as information. That brings us to unfinished business, um, item number six. I would like to hereby open the public hearing, um, for the final reading of ordinance forty-four fifty-six, uh, sixty-six. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation?
Yes, sir. It's to amend the lease to T-Mobile South LLC, a successor in interest to Triton PCS Property Company, LLC DBAT Mobile USA Incorporated, to extend the term of the agreement by adding additional renewal terms.
Thank you. Now I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to go forward and speak on this, uh, this ordinance forty-four sixty-six. Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. I would now hear a motion to approve the final reading and waive the complete reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-six.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance forty-four sixty-six.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion on this? Pretty straightforward.
Again.
Just want to, um, make a comment that I experienced, um, phone issues that I didn't know that I was having until I didn't get phone calls and they had to call City Hall to reach me. So, um, I'm a T-Mobile, uh, person, and the revenue is going to help us out a lot as well. So for those two reasons.
Right, thank you. Is my mic on?
Mine isn't. Can't get it on.
You, you, I think my battery is just, yeah, all right, I'll try to speak. Speak louder, all right. Um, any other comment on this before we vote?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-six, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance forty-four sixty-six is approved. Moving on to new business, Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-one. Uh, Mr. Manager, may I? Yeah, please.
Election of Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this, just simple process, I would, uh, entertain any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem Porey?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. Bryson Caldwell.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
Can I make the motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion that we close the nominations.
Thank you. All right, so, um, all those.
Motion in second, close nominations?
Do I have a motion to close? Do I have a second to close?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in second. Just, uh, all those in favor of, uh, electing Councilman Caldwell to Mayor Pro Tem Porey, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Councilman Caldwell. Yeah, if you want to do the old switcheroo?
You've got two freshmen, for sure.
Yeah, well, you were just saying you're the only freshman that hadn't been able to sit by the mayor.
I'm glad I liked them, boy.
Congratulations. Yes, nice to have you over here.
Congratulations.
You want to keep it on track?
I take the gavel from you.
I'll share a microphone, but don't you take my gavel. All right, we will move right along. Am I forgetting anything? We good? Okay. Mr. Manager, if you would, uh, Resolution twelve twenty-three oh-two, if you would publish it by title and presentation?
Yes, sir. It's approval for the Hartsfield Police Department to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the Myrtle Beach Police Department.
Is this an approval or a, uh, first time or renewal?
I believe this is a renewal.
I think it's a renewal.
But this is just for mutual aid with Myrtle Beach. We do this with several other agencies in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. Um, I would hear a motion to approve Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-two.
So moved.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All those approving Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-two, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution is approved. Item number nine, um, twenty-three oh-three, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, Resolution twelve twenty-three oh-three to approval to apply for hazard mitigation grant program HMGP grant.
I like grants. Any, uh, expounding?
Sure, uh, so this is one you've already approved. But we're bringing it back to you. So we applied for a generator for this building to. This takes payments for water, um, our operations run out here, so we want to have something available. S C E M D, South Carolina Emergency Management Division, took, um, two years to approve it. It just was a backlog going on. It's coming back to you guys, they finally did approve it. It's actually cheaper, so I like that. But I wanted to bring it back to you since it's been two years, uh, for your reapproval.
It's a, a, a new council as well.
That's right, yep.
Being cheaper is too good to be true. I want to go ahead and get this thing before they change their mind.
Well, I think it's, uh, I think it's a two-year-old model.
Yeah, all right.
We're going to keep that, though.
Um, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-three.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion on this resolution?
Nah, he already explained it.
All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-three, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution is approved. Moving right along. Twelve twenty-three zero-four, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it, please.
Yes, sir. It's approval to authorize expenditure of a portion of the American Rescue.
Okay.
And this money, so this is, um, as you might recall, we had several conversations about, uh, group or partnering with the, uh, House of Hope group. And so what this is, this is a expenditure of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the ARPA money that we have, American Rescue Plan Act money, currently still about one point four million dollars unobligated from that funding. And what this will do will secure a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the building. It's a FEMA hospital that's in South Carolina, but it needs to be moved. And also, uh, allocate twenty-five thousand dollars, up to twenty-five thousand dollars for acquisition of property, should it so be needed, uh, somewhere in the Hartsfield area that can best serve the residents. Again, House of Hope offers a variety of services, and they came and did a presentation for you guys. So this is, uh, for council to make the move before the end of December, uh, so that we can go ahead and secure that building, should we so choose.
Y'all calling each other? Um, for the benefit of our, our new counselors, uh, House of Hope came to us with this opportunity. They, uh, have the opportunity to get for free a decommissioned FEMA hospital to use as an emergency shelter. And they came to us and some of the other cities in the PD to see if we could help them find a location to locate this facility. It would be an emergency shelter that would be completely administered by the House of Hope. It would activate or open under specific emergency conditions based on temperature, weather, or some other, uh, natural disaster-type scenarios. They would staff the facility, um, have trained, um, counselors and, and, um, case managers and stuff to, to meet with people and, and give them the, the services they need. And in some cases, those case managers may be able to continue, um, a relationship with that person to really figure out what else they might need to help improve their situation. So that's what this opportunity is, that, that this resolution, um, is the city kind of our, our, our little, uh, contribution to say that we support, uh, support the project. Hopefully that, um, summarizes it decently. So I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-four.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, even though I already ran my mouth? Any questions?
Yeah, I, I got a question. But a location has not been, uh, found yet.
So there is, there was two locations they were working with. Again, this is more House of Hope, not really the city, um, being part of the acquisition. But we, I'll have you guys talk about where it's going to go first. We will have that approval process. But the two locations, uh, did not pan out yet, and so this is still TBD. Now, again, if this does not work out, then the money will not be expended.
Right.
So you are approving authorization to do that.
So I thought they had a deadline on this.
They have a deadline to, um, to, uh, secure the building. They have to secure, obligate the funding for it. So it might be some time correction, but it will be obligated towards that process.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Anything else? All right, um, hearing no other comment, I would, will vote. Um, all those in favor of approving Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-four, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution is approved. Item number eleven, Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-five, Mr. Manager, please.
Yes, sir. It's approval for Hartsfield Police Department HPD to enter into a mutual aid agreement for a multi-jurisdictional task force with Darlington County.
With Darlington County, all right. Excuse me, okay, um, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-five.
May I make a motion that we approve Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-five?
I have a motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second.
We got, all right.
One of the freshmen.
Got some, couple seconds, vying for seconds over here. Are there any questions or comments on, uh, item number eleven before we vote?
Um, one, one question, Mayor. This agreement was, uh, November fourteenth. Is this our last reading?
This is just for a resolution, yes, ma'am.
Some of our resolution, okay.
And this has been something our, our new chief has been working with the county on. We want to establish, reestablish a task force with them to really start tamping down on some of the things going on in countywide. We will assign, um, you know, patrol officers from our department, there'll be other departments. Uh, we're still working towards, uh, greater agreements with the county to really tamp down on some of the things going on. But this is a great step in the right direction.
Step in the right direction, sure. Anything else from council? Hearing none, um, all those in favor of approving Resolution twelve twenty-three zero-five, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, any opposed? The ayes have it, Resolution twelve twenty-three oh-five is approved. Item number twelve, uh, the first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-seven, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation?
Yes, sir. It's to provide for the establishment amendment of the fees and rates that are necessary for the operation of the city of Hartsfield. And just to reiterate, uh, so this is something we've been working on for a while. We had, we had had some comments from some of our developers in town that they want to look at our permit fees and what was going on. And so we, I had tasked my staff and they responded excellently. Looking at what our fees look like across the, uh, area, especially if some of our strong, such as Florence and Darlington County and whatnot. And so you should have all received, um, kind of a list of what we, uh, what the fee was. We actually are fairly low on the list of like thirty-three, we're number like thirty of the list.
Low meaning competitive.
Competitive, meaning we have one, lower rates as opposed to, for instance, the county, I believe. If you were to build a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house, it costs you about sixty dollars of permit fees, not including some later fees. Whereas in the county, it might cost you about two thousand. However, because we do strongly compete and housing is such a critical issue for us, we still feel it's appropriate to give council some options, uh, to look at ways that we can entice some, uh, growth happening here. So what we looked at is our strongest competitor, and we, I, I consider Florence to be one of our main competitors, even though they're four times our size, but we like to punch above our weight. So we decided to look at matching theirs to remain competitive. So what this is, is a first reading to match the Florence permit fee schedule. So we'll be right in line with, again, another low competitor, but we'll be right in there in line with them. And so this is first reading, we still have some time, but if any questions, let me know.
So Florence is, um, is higher or lower than?
Lower, lower than us.
You're lower than us.
So we're going to be beating them.
I got you, yeah, that's fine.
That's the proposal, anyway.
Yes, sir. Florence is lower. No, man, it's, it's, it's not.
Let's have a motion first. Yeah, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-seven. Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. Now, any questions or, uh, or comments?
So it's, it's not half, it's a nominal amount, uh, coaster, I believe, it's just putting to make sure they're right. Uh, depends on, of course, what the cost of the house is, but it's putting those.
All right, anything, any other questions or comments on item twelve?
What we can do to get, um, housing into, um, areas in the city as we have such great need for quality housing.
Try to make it just a little bit easier, every, every little bit easier.
And just to follow up, we are also looking at our density requirements to see if that way. All options are right now being evaluated. That's another reason why we want to do the Planning Commission meeting, with the joint meeting, to make sure we're all on the same page about what city council and planning commission are moving towards, and staff, really. Uh, but the idea is that we want to make sure that it's smart growth. Uh, we don't want to just allow anything, but we want to also make sure that we're getting housing, uh, appropriate housing we need in different areas. Sometimes it might be a townhouse apartment, it might be a single-family dwelling or attached dwelling. So it's just something we need to look at, um, but I'll take a housing of any kind right now.
Will the thirteen dollar difference between the Florence permitting costs and the Beaufort County make a difference for us?
It, it, it can push the needle sometimes, especially when you're doing multiple homes. It, it, it can push the needle sometimes, especially when you're doing multiple homes across multiple times. So what we're having right now, especially in Hartsville, lots of kind of more open swaths of land that are being developed and looked at right now. Bay Road, for instance, is being developed right now. We have some stuff looking at different areas of the city. And so when you're starting to look at subdivisions, not just a single house, for a single builder, it's, this doesn't really push the needle. But when you're talking about a large development, this really does make a difference, uh, when you start adding up those costs. So that's what we want to do. Of course, if, the thing we can always do is look at, make sure we're doing fair and consistent across the board to every builder. When you come and you know what your fees are going to be right off the bat. I don't want any surprises for anybody, uh, fully transparent about what we're trying to do. But it, it does push the needle when you're talking about this.
That's it. The consistency is, is a very good point. That's, uh, super, super important.
To be, and we treat everyone.
Absolutely, yeah.
Staff has done an outstanding job, make sure our processes.
For sure.
Being, of course, you know, streamlined as best we can. We want, we don't want to be the role block.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure we're the, the process and we want to help you along the way, if we can.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm curious if the deduction to Beaufort County, the match to Beaufort County says anything on the grand scheme of things.
As far as with Florence, I mean, um, for us going to Florence.
Beaufort's below Florence, I think thirteen or twelve or thirteen dollars.
Oh, you mean even going a step further down the foot.
Would matching Beaufort County say anything to those looking to develop?
I see. I mean, so right now, we proposed, we looked at the different counties. There's Beaufort's structure, I'm not sure exactly is apples to apples with us. So we essentially are rewriting what we're looking at for Florence to make sure it matches. I think it's a good opportunity to test this out and see how it works. And you could always come back in a year or so and see if this wants to be lowered again and keep on pushing. I mean, this is a great, I hope the headline is Hartsville development. Um, so, uh, but, you know, if anyone's listening, uh, but, uh, I think we can look at that and see if somebody has. But I think certainly we can look at between the first, this first reading and second reading. Staff does everything to do, right? He's busy? Okay. We'll look at it, though, and I'll have an answer for you, uh, next reading.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Meadows, anything from you? All right. I think we are done with questions and comments. Then I would, uh, entertain a vote to approve the first reading. It is just a first reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-seven. All those in favor of approving ordinance, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. First reading of ordinance forty-four sixty-seven is approved. That brings us to the end of business. I want to give one more opportunity to our new counselors for any comments. Or else you just want to get out of here, then we can get out of here.
All the Brian's start.
Glad to have you. We're excited, too.
Same here. I'm excited to get to work for the people of Hartsville, so my door is always open.